Good afternoon, still afternoon, so let's go ahead and get started. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Jim Ferguson. Jim is going to, his name's going to be put forward tomorrow evening at the Assembly level as a new commissioner. So, we look forward to seeing Jim. Rich has an extensive background. He's a former president of Alaska General Contractors. He's a registered professional engineer. So, we hope to see you at one of our meetings here real soon, which would probably be May 8th. And thank you for jumping in with all of the Title 21 rewrite.
Our condolences.
We meet every Monday night at 5:30.
For the rest of your life.
For the foreseeable future, but not really, not really for the foreseeable.
We'll tell you when we're not meeting.
Yeah, we'll let you know when we're not meeting. If you have any special food considerations, please let us know, because Dan has been doing really well in providing us a variety of opportunities. Terry Parks and I did meet with the mayor today, and the mayor is supportive of all of the current boards and commissions and director retaining all of the authority and that, I'm not speaking very well, that is currently in the Title 21 and not in the provisionally adopted chapters. The mayor is also supportive of an economic study as it relates to the change in potential values for the property owners as well as the municipality for tax assessed valuation purposes, as it relates to changes in zoning. And so, I believe it will be the intent of the administration to go forward with a state and/or local consulting firm for an economic study in that regard. Obviously, that is going to take some time to accomplish, and the mayor has suggested that we proceed with our recommendations to the Assembly for the rewrite and the amendments without that portion of the provisionally adopted chapters until we have an opportunity to evaluate that economic impact study that several of you have asked for, as well as the land use plan map. And those were the two major issues as it relates to the changes in zoning that we have been discussing. So, Terry, anything else that you would like to add in regards to all of that? Okay, so, that's where we are in regards to all of that, and so I thought that that was a good and productive meeting. While I was gone, Sally and Rich and Terry Parks did meet to go through some of the policy issues for discussion this evening. And so, Sally, would you like to go ahead and start? And Terry, please, since I've just returned, if you could follow up with some comments?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
The first issue identified is how will the implementation of the new Title 21 affect development or construction that is in progress? Are the proposed provisions for implementation acceptable? And I refer everyone to 2101-090E, which talks about what happens with pending applications, preliminary plans, for discussion on. The commission thinks that those procedures as written are acceptable, or if there's any revisions that need to be made.
We had some dialogue last week, basically, on how we were going to handle the implementation of Title 21. And I know that's one of the policy changes that may make some difference when we go through, of whether we were going to have it over a period of time, something that was in place already, you already had plans in, approved, subdivision approved. There's lots of things that we need to address. And I think this is more of a policy issue on how we ought to go about it. It was brought up by several different people, and I think that's the reason it surfaced again here, that we need to kind of talk about that a little bit, and then move on to the next policy I don't know we have.
Other comments? Well, we do have some people here that I think may be helpful to us in giving us some background regarding this issue. One would be Dan and Balls, and the other one would be Tim Potter. So, both of you have entities that, or represent entities that have ongoing developments. I guess the first issue would be item number two at the top of page seven, which says, lots that legally existed on the effective date of this title may become nonconforming based upon the provisions of Chapter 21.12, nonconformities. Do you guys have any comments regarding that?
Next, that is probably a good thing, that they are, that these are recognized as a legal on point, that's the important thing, that they're still usable.
Dan?
Currently, under the code, as long as it's a legal platted lot, you can develop it. Even a set, you can still develop a lot less than, you're providing you need setbacks and then give variances. But the one thing that happens here is when somebody has a platted lot that is smaller than the area or width or length, the municipality still has to go through a nonconforming determination. So, if it has an opportunity here, is that a necessary step for a person trying to get his building permit to go through that, when it's already a recorded plat and it's public record?
Excuse me, how long does that process take currently?
At least 30 days.
How much does it cost the applicant?
About $250.
That's just the fees?
That's just the fee to do it, yeah, providing, he's coming in for the permit, he's already got the plot plan, he knows he has all that, that they basically have to come in and go through administrative review to tell him that what's on the plat is legal, and the plat is legally renewable.
Mr. Coffey, do you have any comments regarding this particular item?
No, I think most of the questions can get answered in Chapter 12 when you make the determination relative to what being nonconforming will, what consequences there will be of that fact when we come in. It's really a statement of fact that if you change the land use code, that something may become nonconforming. Obviously, it will happen in occasions, and then the question is, to what degree do changes take place as a result of changes in the code, what are your limitations on use and so on? And things like remodeling and so on in the commercial section, I mean, in the commercial area are covered predominantly in Chapter 12.
I see here that in item number two at the top of page seven, buildings and structures are deleted from this, and so this is only applicable to lots? Is that how I'm reading that correctly?
There were four things, I believe. Wasn't that right? Four elements of nonconforming, and buildings and structures were not, and uses were not. There you go. So, the fourth one would be the land, yeah.
Okay, so I believe that this particular item addresses only lots because, well, no, structures. So, buildings has been deleted, it's shaded in gray, is that right, Sally? The S has been deleted, and then structures, it's, so it's really structures and lots? Is that correct in how I'm reading it? Structures and lots that legally existed and may become nonconforming?
That looks like a technical change. Structures, buildings?
Yes, it does look like a technical change, except I think that it's an important issue, which we really haven't yet addressed, about nonconformities. And my issue regarding all of that would be, you know, the implication for long-term financing on if you have a lot that is nonconforming, and how that may be identified for appraisal purposes. And I don't, and, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, then, item number E1B, for multi-phase projects, this subsection shall apply only to those phases for which complete applications have been submitted for approval, but upon which no final action has been taken by the appropriate decision-making body prior to the effective date of this title. So, in other words, if you have a large, multi-phase project, the only phases that are grandfathered in, am I reading this correctly? That are, that the only phases, explain this, explain if you have a six-phase project or a four-phase project, explain what this means. If you were under construction and you had an approved plan by the municipality for phases one, two, and three, that would fall under the current land use Title 21. But three, the remaining three phases would not be under the current Title 21 and would be under the new Title 21? Is that correct? Jerry, is that correct?
I don't know. I, you know, I don't have the books that you're working from, so I really, I don't have.
Okay, so, I don't believe there have been any changes here. This is, I, under 21.01.090 transitional provisions, so if you have transitional provisions, if you would look under pending applications?
Page seven, lines 13 through 16.
I don't believe, it may be, the lines may be numbered in, not the same, but for, there's been no change to this particular item?
Correct.
Okay. So, for the example that I've given, can you give me, is that a correct analysis of that?
Well, I didn't receive the agenda items to discuss tonight, so I would need to read this and get back with a response.
All right. So, Mr. Coffey, if you, could you interpret this then?
It was intended when we did, and I don't have the language in front of me, I'm sorry, I'm just getting that book tonight. But what was intended was, if you had your plans applied for, not approved necessarily, but applied for, and were in the process, and you filed for your permit, and your permit application was complete, then you could operate under the existing Title 21 and not the new Title 21 for those where permits had been applied for. The second part of the question is, what happens to those three phases where you've got, you know, tract A, tract B, and tract C, and there's no permits applied for, nothing? There was the investment expectation provision that is being deleted from Chapter 1 that would have allowed you to come in and make a showing that you had a substantial amount invested in that, and therefore, you should be allowed for some period of time to proceed under the old code because it would, because you invested a lot of money. We had a real problem trying to develop language for that. So, what they, what was done was it was deleted, not by the Title 21 Committee, but by recommendation of staff, but without a sejection by the Title 21 Committee, because we couldn't figure out what the investment-backed exemption from the new law would be. And then the next question becomes, if you give enough, long enough lead time for this kind of thing, then perhaps you can ameliorate the consequences of that.
So, what happens to master plans and subdivision agreements and all that sort of thing?
My understanding is that a master plan would have been approved, and you would have been able to proceed in conformance with that, under the approval of the master plan. Subdivision agreements, you don't get a subdivision agreement.
Until you're under construction, right.
Your permit application is done, so that's a self-adjourned question.
Okay.
This was something that was talked a lot about, because if somebody's really moving down the road, you don't want to all of a sudden change all the rules on it. But we didn't, we couldn't come up with a way to necessarily say that. What I recommend is you just delay the effective date of this, or write a specific clause that says in land use issues, you can use the old one for a period of a year, as opposed to a few months or 18 months or something like that. Because I think of Eagle River and Powder Ridge.
Yes, that would be a very good example.
Yeah, that I'm very familiar with, because, well, we dealt with it when I was on the Assembly. So, I understand they've got generalized plans, but with all the lots and tracts they have out there, there is no specific permits applied for or issued for all the land developments that go down over the course of the year.
There's a little bit of a difference there, because it was under the PC zoning district, and the piece that got the PC on it has actually adopted with design standards by ordinance.
What about the rest of it?
The rest of it doesn't have approved master plan, and doesn't have anything covered, which probably would be subject to whatever happens to the future. I think the bigger concern that Connie has brought up is that what happens to the project like a West Park, or a Powder Creek, or something else that may have 10 years' worth of development in it, but it's designed to be a single-family duplex style development. The code changes, the land use plan map changes, it calls for a higher density, and that you have to meet the minimum of the design density, and it's different than what your plan calls for. So, you have to go back and totally review things. And maybe your sewer and water were designed on a lower density basis, and now you've got other issues, so.
Well, how do you answer?
It's, you know, there should be some test to be able to come back. I agree, I don't know what the language is, but.
Okay. Mr. Balls, do you have any comment regarding this?
You know, in Title 23 in the building code, they handle these same type scenarios, where you have a project that is coming forward, they've had a preliminary meeting with municipality, and they work out that you will be under this code, and you go forward. I don't see why you couldn't do the same thing here.
Okay, all right. Commissioner comments? I don't know that we have a resolution to this particular issue.
I think you should also talk about the effective date that you guys are, would want to recommend, how far out you want to have.
You mean from, effective date from passage for the assembly?
Yes.
I think it should, you know, it should be, yeah, whatever it is, one year, 18 months, whatever. Not a hard date, because we don't know what day would ever pass the assembly.
Right. For the time frame.
Yeah. My vote is at least a year, 12 months.
Other comments?
I think it's an important number, whatever you vote, because it becomes a hard date at some point in time where you're going to be below that standard. And I think we need to be careful with that, because it, especially in subdivision development, sometimes there are two-year projects minimum, some of them even longer than that. And, you know, the comment that was made is we had some concern about timing when we worked at it in our last work session, so I just, I think that's the reason they're sort of brought up again. We kind of flashed over it, and I think it is a big question to answer. I think it needs to be longer than 12 months, I guess, I guess that's what I'm saying. You know, I don't know what the number is. I don't, I just don't know how long it takes to get all that stuff through. But we ought to be careful with that.
Ray, do you have any comments here?
I just want to know how long is appropriate? I don't know how long is appropriate. Is it a year and a half? I mean, do you have one season? Do you have?
I think you have two seasons, actually. That's sort of my gut reaction to it, because it takes so long now to plan, and then you have such a, and when you're building roads, water, and sewer, you have such a short window of opportunity to create it, and if you miss by, you know, 45 days in getting your permit, sometimes you're just out of luck until the next season. But the planning, the planning part of it starts much earlier than that. Stacy, did I hear something from you?
I would say at least two years, I would think, I thought that would be fair, like you suggested. I think that's a good idea. Okay. Rich, do you have comments?
I would think a little longer, like two years.
Peter?
I think two seasons.
Two seasons, so that's two years.
Just a comment, Dan came down, so I know that Connie is familiar, and I'm sure Ray is too, that if you've got a larger project, and you believe it's going to be multi-phase, you can get your plating approval for a phase approval of up to 60 months, so five years. So, I'd want to make sure that if I did a project and had a 60-month approval for multiple phases for a plant, that after two years of going through it, you wouldn't all of a sudden lose the rights that you had, because it was approved for five years. So, I guess we just need to be careful about if it's a regular plat that's got 18 months of approval period, or if it's a phased plat that gets an approval for 60 months from the plating board, or finding the zoning package that's applied.
Would that not be unapproval, though, if you didn't have that five years? That's kind of what I was.
I don't know when the discussion's going on, and people are using permit versus approval application. They're all different things, and that's why I'd want to be cautious about the open conditions.
When you came down.
I would hope that whatever you did, that it was good, clear the time that you had to do it, and by the time you get your recorded plat with 18 months, that you've put a lot of money into a subdivision agreement to build in a certain way, and that's how it's entered in design. I would hope that that would carry you past your initial approval and your subdivision agreement if you didn't have insurance.
Well, let's take, because no one's involved around this table in West Park, let's just take West Park as an example, which, you had that main spine road, and then you had all these phases. I don't know how many there are, seven or eight different phases off of it, and, you know, the water and sewer is in the main road, and then there are the offshoots for all those different phases, and if, you know, this is a long-term project, it's been going on now for how many years? Five?
2006.
Huh? Yeah, yeah, so, six years, it's been going on for six years. It's still, not all the phases are still developed, and may not be for, you know, especially on what would be the west side, the west side of the road, which is now owned in part by the municipality, owned by the municipality, so, two of those phases. So, it becomes a real issue in terms of water and sewer extensions in the design, and the capacity, and all that sort of thing, so. Okay. Any more input regarding that matter?
Will we have someone draft a straw man to look at?
Mm-hmm.
Before we have to.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, well, I think the general consensus is longer than one year. It looks like it's a two-year, close to a two-year, okay?
Except for clarification of the long-term.
Yes, yeah. Anything, anything else, yes, that relates, any other comments?
Did you, did you go over other aspects of 2101? Sorry to be late.
Uh, no.
Okay.
So, we just went, well, item number two, D2, we went over that, and we have addressed E, B, and Bruce, thank you for all the work that you have done on these chapters. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry I'm late, I went to the Assembly chambers.
Yeah, that's quite all right.
I actually have a couple of amendments. I'm trying to find all my stuff right now, I'm sorry. You know, what, perhaps you should continue.
Okay, and you'll come back, all right, you'll come back to us. Okay, Sally, item number two, would you like to?
This raises the question of the environment community council. Should applicants for proposed development or subdivision require to present their request to the effective community council? Should the director be allowed to waive the requirements of presentation? Should there be a procedure for waiver? It's, the memo is 2103-020. It's also in Dan Coffey's material, and it's page six and exhibit F.
I have a question.
Okay, Dana?
On the process, how this works. Does, does an applicant, if he conforms to the zoning and to the land use plan and all that, to me, the question is, if he conforms to all that, and you go, and then you go in front of the community council, and they try to change things, which then, or, you know, or disagree, or whatever, even though everything's lined up and keys are frosted, eyes are dotted, does that give the community council undue influence over the process? Which brings me back to, if the director does not see any difference, you know, everything's the same, the other side of the coin is, if he sees it all the same, why would it have to go there? Maybe inform them, you know, and they can write comments to the commission or whatever, but to go through the process of making a presentation and trying to come up with some negotiated deal when everything's, everything's lined up, is that obstruction? Is that good community involvement? What is that process?
All of the above.
My initial reaction is, is that if it's lined up, then it's an additional expense, and it tends to start to skew, what, you know, the community can start to skew, actually, what was intended originally, and we want that, we want to let that happen.
Does anyone want to have a response right now?
I'm not saying it's bad or good, I'm just saying, is that the end result? Is the end result?
Right, well, let me.
I have a little feeling.
Well, I know you do, but, but we're going to take the commissioner comments first, all right? So, I want to hear from the commissioners first regarding this matter. Terry?
Sure, I, you know, this is one of the things that we fret a little bit about, is that, you know, the community councils are set up to be the contact point for anything that's going on in the community. You have to have some place, and it's better if you do it in one central location. I know it's more expensive, I know it adds things to it, but I think we have a responsibility in the community councils to let them know what's going on in their neighborhood, and this is what's been set up. Whether we like it or not, it's, that's a moot issue. The issue is, that's the way it's been set up, that the community councils get an opportunity to look at what's developed.
Yeah, I'm not saying they don't get the opportunity, I'm talking about typically, if there's a disagreement, and then everything is, you know, the.
Somebody's got, at some point in time, has got to get in front of them, and when do you do it? I mean, you'd much better do it early in the project, rather than late in the project. And I can tell you, when they, when they come to us, and the community council's endorsed a project, it makes it a lot easier for us, because we know that at least the public has been involved at the ground roots level, versus. versus being, you know, being done later.
It's not the agreement, it's the disagreement I'm trying to get my hands around.
Well, even the disagreement, it allows you to know that there's an issue when it comes to us. I mean, we'll get public testimony, we'll hear it again, but it gives us an opportunity to know there's an issue out there. And in our package, as the community council said it, we know how many things they sent out, we know what their responses have been, and we know that the mailings were done. That has a huge, unless, at least it does on me, because at least we know that they've made an opportunity to reach out to the community. If there's no reaction, it means it's positive. If there's lots of reaction, no negatives, then we have an opportunity to hear that at our meeting again. So I see there's a huge impact in the community to get people involved. And to bypass that, I think, is a travesty to the community council.
Stacy?
The difficulty, I used to be involved in my community council. The difficulty is, is that you may have 25 people show up for the meeting, and only two are from the general public. The rest are all presenters or are there for a different reason. So you might have two people, and you might be a big issue, and you might have 100 people show up. Unfortunately, it's not really a true representation often. Also, community council people that are on the board are not elected by the general public. They're elected at a meeting of the community council. So it's a little not real, I don't know, always a true slice of the community and what their real thoughts are.
How else can we get that information if we? That's the piece that I see, the one that's set in place.
Bruce?
Yeah, I tend to think that the process is not perfect, never has been perfect. But the, I guess you'd describe it as being the charter of the municipality places or identifies that community councils as being the principal entities by which the decision makers in the community evaluate aspects of the proposal and get a recommendation from the community. Now, obviously, that's an advisory recommendation, but it's still what the community has used for, I think, in excess of 20 years as a vehicle for input. And there are certainly imperfections. And I'm not sure we can cure the imperfections, actually. But I think that it makes sense to have the community councils as being a vehicle. When I reviewed this, I had certain recommendations. Is this the time?
Sure, for this particular issue, yes.
Actually, what I did is I reviewed the coffee report. And Mr. Kopp made a series of recommendations, and some of what I forgot to mention is pursuant to that. What I'd recommend at the end of the first sentence is, if an applicant, oh, by the way, Dave, did you pass out that material? Dave, did you pass out this material? Okay, all right. If an applicant chooses to not use a community council, a narrative shall be provided to the planning director to explain their reasons for this decision. This report shall be available at the time of authorization review. I would also recommend to delete the waiver requirement. That's the waiver requirement on the planning director. And then also, I would delete under 2103-020, current six, delete subsection B, because it's too difficult for an applicant to develop deals with dates and mailings and all that, increase all sorts of possibilities for procedural errors. So I guess what I found in this is that it made sense to use the community councils. It made sense to provide, it did not make sense for the planning director to provide a waiver. That does not make sense to me. I would agree with Mr. Kopp. However, at the same time, I think that if they don't use the community councils, the applicant has to explain why he did not use the community councils and has to require a report from the planning director. And that should be available at the time of authorization review.
So you're recommending the elimination of a community meeting, per se?
No, I'm not.
Other than the community council, is what you're saying? As an option.
When the community council doesn't meet during the summer period, are you saying that the first choice should be to organize a community meeting with as good a distribution as possible and alert the planning director that that is being done? And then the second option would be, if you can't, if that can't be done, or if it's not successful, then what? We'd have a second option. Well, the problem comes to the scheduling issue of the community councils during the summer. I guess the way I would come out is that you have to move proposals forward. And I would think that a reasonable compromise would be to use a community meeting as a vehicle for that. And frankly, I'm a little bit concerned that somebody's taking advantage of this, well, too. And that's why I think if you don't use the community council, you have to explain why it is that you're not using the community councils, you're not taking advantage of that type of approach. Why I don't want to have happen is that we go around the community council that we should go through. You know, Bruce, there may be a way to soften that risk by attempting to make it so that not only the planning directors notify that that community meeting is planned and noticed, but also the community council for that area is, the president of the council and the federation are both noticed at the same time. So that if there is a huge issue, a president can, has a chance of notice, figuring that out, and red flag goes out, he can, he or she can do whatever they can to respond by getting more attendance or asking the applicant to just hold off for a couple of months until they can meet. At least have a dialogue. I think we ought to have notice to the community council involved somehow. Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I think that would be a reasonable reform. I'm just not sure it goes inside the code. It may be a direction to invite staff, for example, during the summer months. But I'm not opposed to the council, I'll say it that way. What I'm particularly concerned about in this is that we not impose undue requirements upon the applicant, and that's the reason for a violation of subsection D, and that we not have a waiver requirement.
I agree with that. So if we require them to go to the community council, and then the community council doesn't meet every month, I mean, the restrictions, they don't meet in the summer. So we're essentially saying, you have to, we could say, you have to go to the community council, and oh, by the way, they meet nine times out of the year, and you get at least 90 to 120 days where they don't meet. I mean, that, to me, just doesn't make sense. If it was every month, and it was consistent, and...
That's like giving them the option of...
Yeah, now, if I was in this planning director's shoes, I would check community council every time, just from the political ramifications. Why would I want to take the heat from the community and not let them have an opportunity to comment? I just wouldn't do that. That's my opinion.
Well, let me weigh in here with a couple of comments. Because I was, a few years ago, part of this discussion. I think the community has the right, so to speak, to know what's going on in their neighborhood. And many times, there are onsite issues that, it could be drainage, it could be a variety of things, that people other than the neighbors may not be aware of. And let me just give you an egregious example, which is, you know, currently, you can build a 90-unit condominium project on a single tract of land, and you've heard me all say this before, without having any involvement whatsoever from the community. And, but if you do a 10-lot subdivision, you have to have public notification. And I think that a lot of the discontent that we have had in this community over the past 10 years as it relates to condominium development and site condo development has to do with the fact that the neighbors have had absolutely zero impact and notification about, and input about what is going to happen in their immediate neighborhood. The community council...
I have a question about that.
Okay.
So if it meets the letter of the code, the 90-unit deal, and the application's put in, and it goes to the community council, I'm just trying to see what happens and what really happens. And the community pitch is a big fit over it, doesn't like it, even though it fits everything, and they recommend not doing it. And it comes to the planning and zoning commission, right? And the department has to say, well, it meets the code, it meets the land use plan, it meets all these things, and the community's up in arms in it. Then the commission either has a yes or no, or passes it along. If they say no, they have to have reasons, because people don't like it? I mean, if it meets, again, I'm going to, if it meets the letter of the law and meets the code, if it goes to the assembly and somebody says, we don't like it, we don't want it because the community's up against it, but it meets, what does that mean? I mean, what, maybe legally, where does that put the commission to say no even though it's in statute? Or do you do that? I'm not familiar with that. I've never seen, what happens?
Well, what happens, I mean, we have one going on right now on Northern Lights Boulevard, where we had a condominium project that Lee Baker was going to build, and now it's going to be a school. It has the same kind of impacts. It's allowed use in the zoning district, just as its condominiums were allowed use in that district. And they cause impacts, primarily traffic impacts and compatibility with adjacent property owners. But they're both by right uses. So how would you ameliorate it? You would look at trying to mitigate those traffic impacts. But is it appropriate to do that when they're by right uses? There are provisions in the code, in the provisionally adopted code, that talk about, you know, how to mitigate those. And some people are talking about stripping those out, that, you know, through the building permit process, those would be addressed. So that that process would be addressed through that process. But there'd be no way to go back to the planning commission to talk about a by right kind of use that without those provisions in, for the building fisher to make those decisions, they wouldn't be mitigated. Those impacts wouldn't be mitigated. You know, if the zoning is there and it's allowed use, it should be allowed use. And unfortunately, quite a few of our properties are not so compact and contiguous with the right zoning that's right next to the other zoning. So it's a challenging thing in every...
Yeah, I didn't know what the outcome, I'm sorry. I didn't understand what the process was, should something like happen.
So, you know, my position is, and I have been told by planners and engineers, at least two of them, that, and I'm only a resident, and I only have residential experience, I don't have commercial experience, that if they had to go to the community council, they would have a better-looking project. I mean, really, because there's a public scrutiny. There's, you know, and I suspect that that's true. Maybe it's a tree, you know? Maybe it's shutters. Maybe it's varied paint colors on, you know, buildings or whatever. And not everything is gray or blue, you know, or white. But I think that it's important that there be some community input. And what we do, whether it's by right or whatever, or what our findings of fact are, it doesn't matter. I believe that the community has, should have the opportunity to have input about what's going on in their own backyard. And then, after that, then it has to do with by right and all that sort of thing. But I think you have better, you will have better projects if a developer has to go to the community council.
Connie, are you saying that it must be the community council?
Well, my recommendation is that it be the community council because that is an organization that is already established and available to deal with it. I would go one step further and say that if the community council is not meeting in the summertime, then the developer should organize a community meeting of some sort, whether it's a posting at the local grocery store, at Cars, or, you know, Fred Meyer, or if it's an outreach to some of the other organizations that are within that community, you know, in a church bulletin or whatever it is. I think then there needs to be some outreach. That doesn't mean, and we have, in our casework, we have disregarded and we have taken into consideration those comments from the community council. Now, having been at community councils, you know, I'm not always happy with, you know, the outcome that those community councils provide, because I agree with you, Stacy. Sometimes there's, you know, three very vocal people, and, you know, the people that speak the loudest are the ones that sometimes, you know, get, you know, their way in a meeting. But, you know, I still think you need to go through the process. That's what I would say. And it needs to be a public process of sorts, to the best of the developer's ability if the community council is not available. That's my comment.
I would agree with everything you said, and maybe suggest that the department come up with some guidelines for a developer organized meeting so that they have some idea of what they need to do and what will pass muster and how many resources they are equipped to really get the desired effect of participation.
You know, I don't, I agree that the community should know. I'm just struggling with the venue and how to be consistent so that people can plan and budget and understand what's expected. And that's really my methodology here, is that if we're required to do something, then put them in the box.
Put it in the box.
And don't leave it open-ended and say, one or the other, or both, or one may allow you to do it, one may not. I agree that the public should be involved. I just want to make sure that we're clippits. The recommendation that I would vote for is it's clear, it's understandable, it's reasonable, both economically and time-wise.
Right.
So that it can either come to conclusion or not, but developer or applicant knows, you know, the box he's in.
All right. Okay, so then we would ask staff to develop a procedure for a community meeting if the community council is not available.
I think it's already there.
It's already there. All right. Okay, specifically, okay?
Well, actually, I think that item C, and it proposes amendments, deals with that, doesn't it?
Okay. For the benefit, would you, would someone please read item C then?
Okay, C, the applicant is encouraged to use the community council's meeting of the project area as a community meeting when the community council's meeting is available. If the community council's meeting for the project area is less scheduled than entirely mattered, the applicant shall organize a community meeting. If the project area spans more than one community council and the applicant chooses to attend community council meetings, the applicant shall attend the community council meetings of all applicable community councils.
Right, right. What I was asking for is something...
Number two doesn't say that.
Right, yeah. What Dana and I are asking for is something a little more specific. And so is Rich, asking for something a little more specific about what is the community, the community meeting and what sort of outreach should be demonstrated to substitute for a community council meeting that is not available.
You know, for example, how much notice, what kind of notice? Are you talking about simply the requirements that are in C2? All the items under C2 then?
Where?
C2A, that's where it's six.
See, the question is, should the applicant for proposed development or subdivision be required to present their affect to their affected community council? And what this says is yes unless they're not meeting. And then it gives an alternative.
Yes.
And so that's why I was, when I first asked this question about the community council, thinking that they only met nine months out of the year. That doesn't work. There's got to be another option if they're not meeting.
Okay. All right. I think we know where we're going.
But I think you spilled over into another area as to, should other items be taken to the community council? I mean, you talked about that. You talked about by right uses of needing some type of scrutiny. Was that just anecdotal, or?
Well...
Because that obviously wouldn't go here.
Well, if you had to put everything, go in front of the community on everything, condominium, the topic would be mute. I mean, you'd have to do it, period.
Well, I...
It's by right, right?
Yeah.
Most developers are going to stand by their guns that they want to have the ability, when they purchase a piece of property, to develop it just as its own. Now, some communities have thresholds, if they're significant, you know, traffic impacts, that they put on a higher level of review in certain cases. that they put on a higher level of review, in certain cases. So if the commission wants to look at that, you know, for certain types of projects, where it has, you know, traffic impacts over X amount of ADT, then you can do it that way.
But don't you guys review it anyway? Or doesn't traffic review?
Well, they do. But I think you're wanting a little bit more than the traffic part, you're talking about, you know, design.
Well, I do want a little bit more, when it comes to condominium development, large condominium developments on a single track, that do not require any sort of public input whatsoever. You know, obviously, if you're going to the Plating Board, or you're going to the Planning and Zoning Commission, or you're going to UDC, then, in my opinion, you need to have gone to the community council, to the appropriate community council. If you're asking for anything special, for example, and then I guess we need to deal with the condominium, you know, my personal, you know, cross to bear, we need to deal with that separately. But I, both Dan's have comments, and I'm sure Tim Potter does as well. So, Dan, let's start with you.
As far as the condominiums, any more than, I believe, two structures on any lot, the provisions, the new provisions, 2107, has 100H.
Yeah.
It has a whole section in there on that. It's a site planner view.
Yeah.
And that means that there can be notification. And so, that's something that we, we give to that section. Under this section here, that we're talking about, under 210302C, the timing, number of community meetings, notice to the community meeting, 21 days in advance, attendance at the meeting, summary of the community meeting, all of that's included in this section, all of the council, step by step.
All right.
It really does.
Okay.
It really does.
Okay, yes. All right, Dan.
Site condo amendment is under amendment 65, and one of those was sent in.
Right. And the Planning and Zoning Commission dealt with that, I think, the last time around.
Could have been.
Yeah.
One of the things I think you guys should consider is, what is it that the code says goes in front of the community councils? It's not a building permit, or a small thing.
Right.
Rezones, subdivisions, except for abbreviated plans, conditional uses, master plans, major site plan review, and public facility site selection. None of those things take weeks, they take months. Most of your community councils meet. Most of your community councils have executive boards, that if they're not meeting in the summer, they can call an executive board meeting. The reason that I suggested, and fought for, the idea of going to community councils, is because our charter says to effectuate a maximum participation by our citizens. It doesn't say organize a community meeting, and all of those things. I don't understand why, I mean, I don't agree with Dana's concern about not being able to get this thing heard by a community council. It'll get heard, because you're not going to get a rezoning done in six months. And these are the big things, they're not the little things.
Well, conditional uses don't necessarily take that one. I remember FedEx Ground was looking for a spot on the airport, and the process for a conditional use was invoked, and the, he went elsewhere, to a place that was already, without requiring the conditional use.
Conditional use.
Now, that's fine, he went somewhere else, he was satisfied.
So, how long did it take?
But it took him two seconds to get the other one.
Yeah.
But it was an undetermined amount of times, that he would have had to go through.
And can-
I'm just saying that, you know, if I was in his shoes, I would have liked to have certainty, and within a, quote, reasonable period of time, compared with my objectives. If I'm moving quickly to implement a nationwide policy to do FedEx Ground, then I want to, I've got people upstairs telling me, get it done.
I understand. And if it's a secondary choice, that's of less concern, because when I read the provisionally, it was a community meeting, and community councils were not reflected. So what I thought was, wait a second, the charter says that we've all been there hundreds of times, on these major issues, so why are we allowing yet another process? So if it's the exception process, okay?
Yes. Then it was the exception.
And that's exactly, you know, when the mayor looked at this, that's exactly what he said, is do the, make the changes to make the community councils the go-to.
Right.
When they're not available, then you can do a community meeting, using the same parameters.
Okay. All right. Okay, we all are in agreement.
Well, I mean, I generally think that the way it's structured right now is pretty much effective, because it has community councils, it goes to community councils, they can't go to community councils, they have to organize a meeting.
Okay.
The only thing I would recommend still, is the elimination of a waiver requirement.
Yes.
And I would also recommend that you require a report be given to the planning director in the event that you should submit other than a community council, to explain the reasons why.
Okay.
We don't want that to be misused.
Yeah. That's a good point. All right.
Wait a minute. Item C talks about what the report should include, right? Page number one. It says- Page nineteen and twenty.
Those are just the waiver under B.
Right.
Oh.
Okay. All right. I think we have, we have not discussed the issue of, should the director be allowed to waive the requirement for presentation to the community councils? Bruce has suggested that that should not occur. Does anyone have any comment regarding that?
I just have a question. Why did this come up? Was there a need for this to, obviously, there was a need somewhere?
For a waiver?
Yeah, for a waiver. I just don't understand.
I have no idea.
Well, I think, mine, from my recollection, what we talked about was that in cases where it was inconsequential, that a person would make that decision. It's a decision you'd have to live with, too, and certainly would have to be inconsequential, or would be consequential.
You have to do it carefully.
So, it just means that if they're going to do an amendment, and that's minor, inconsequential, if you take this provision out, they'll have to go, they'll have to hold the hearing with the council.
Okay, that's not consequential. If you look at applicability, you see, A, Little I through Little 6, those are consequential actions. Your waivers is on those things. I don't think you want to waiver on major actions, and minor actions are not included. And moreover, I don't think, as my director, I would want to be placed in a granting waiver to developers, because it's a decision they're going around the system.
Right, I agree with that, Bruce. I think their intention was, institutional master plans, and minor amendments to conditional uses.
Well, that still, does he say that?
But it still has to go to the commission, those minor amendments, and they may be non-public hearing, and I think that's why they had that language in there. You could waive that in going to the council, because that would take additional time, if they were really seriously minor, because that was part of, you know, what the code was rewritten for, is to expedite those processes.
I don't disagree with you, but that's not the way it's written right now. It's written for all the major projects.
Right.
If you want, after the smaller administrative reviews, then you have to rewrite that section to provide for that, as a discrepancy.
Just by putting the word for a minor, under B waiver.
Yeah.
Well, that gets into question, what's minor?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
It really does.
I don't think there should be a waiver.
I don't think so either. I think it's clear code.
Yeah.
I do think, though, that if a person is going to not use a community council, after explaining why it is they're not using the community council.
Yes.
And they got to provide to the drug, and they got to apply, provide a community planning board, or the planning commission, at the time of the authorizations, so they don't take advantage of the process.
Yes, I would agree. Is there any other comment? Any disagreement?
Copying the community council.
Yep. Yep. All right.
Can I ask one more? I think on 6B, I don't know if we've come to 6B or not.
Where are you?
I'm on page twenty, summary of community meeting, I'm going to 6B, and I don't think that's a proper requirement to include. That is very difficult to do, and I think a summary is sufficient. I don't see the applicant required to write all the letters involved, all the meeting notices, and all the written material.
Okay.
What you're trying to do is provide a summary of the situation, and this is that's much before, much beyond the summary.
I have a D, 6D.
You know, it's B, like in boy.
B as in boy, 6B.
Yeah.
Line thirty-four.
Not what I'm saying, is just eliminate everything except.
Well, I don't have a problem with contents or date mails, but a number of mailings, including letters, meeting notices, any of the written material, that is a setting you have for litigation.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from commissioners? We have consensus? Okay, all right. Item number three, should there be a limitation, Sally, please?
Should there be a limitation on what type of off-site improvements can be required as a condition to obtaining a land use permit? Should the cost for off-site improvements be limited to percentage of the cost of development? The code section is 2103, 100B. It's also on page seven, called coffee materials, and also can exhibit.
Just for clarification, I'm looking at page fifty-two, item three A, is that one or two?
It's on page fifty-one.
So, okay, the bottom of page fifty-one.
It's actually on fifty-two as well.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have a comment that I'll start off the discussion with. In applying the provisions of chapter 21.08 subdivision standards, under this section, the term lot, which would, shall be substituted for the term subdivision. So, the term, so, let me just clarify, that under this situation, lot is a more, is a narrower defined term than subdivision. So, what this, I'm thinking about landscaping requirements, for example.
Any development?
Huh?
Think about any development.
Right, right. That there would, the plat can be recorded, and a lot can exist, prior to a subdivision being completed, whether it's a commercial subdivision, or a residential subdivision. So, I just want to make sure, because it's important, that you could build on this lot that is recorded in a plat, without all of the subdivision improvements being completed. Is that the correct interpretation of this? Jerry?
I'm not sure, but the, you know, if you have an executed subdivision agreement, we have allowed construction both in and outside a building safety service area, for structures to go on those lots that are of record and recorded, and we've had some issues with that happening. Tudor molding curve, that particular development range, was a pretty significant problem, homeowners trying to go in there and move into a house with unpaved streets and unpaved driveways. So, I'm not sure that this, you know, really captures that particular problem. I think this was, this was meant for areas that weren't in the process of having a subdivision, weren't in the process of having a subdivision approval, that were developing multiple lots, per se, that required some infrastructure improvement.
So, the applicability, then, is to a lot.
Yes.
Perhaps in subdivision, perhaps not. And applies to any lot, even a particular improvement area. And what this means, based on what I've heard, is that the development shall, in the development, be consistent with the general design standards for that area of the community, like urban standards, for example. So, this is where they pick up, in design review process, the necessary improvements, for those improvements to be developed, to a common design standard, urban or rural, for example. I got that joint.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Bruce.
Okay. It's a very powerful section, by the way.
Yes.
And it's something that's been around, I guess, for like about nine years now, something like that. I don't know how long it's been around.
Well, this provision's in the code, primarily only for condominium development.
Yes.
It's, there's no authority, there's no authority out there right now to do this kind of thing. In outlining land use permit areas, there's no authority with a building permit.
Okay, and that goes to the central question of applicability. So what does this particular section mean? Where's it applied to?
It applies to multiple lots being developed, without the benefit, say, paper-plated subdivisions that were out there, that had no improvements made to them. It gives the municipal authority to be able to exact those requirements.
Right, exactly.
Okay, but what about something that's not paper-plated? What about something that is under construction as a subdivision? And-
Those subdivision agreements would take, you know, obviously, they're legitimate, they have warranties that go along.
Well, no, I understand all that, but I'm talking about, right now, you can, if you are doing a residential subdivision, you can actually go get a permit on the track. You can get one permit on the track, to build a house, to build a model home, for example. Would you be allowed to do that, here, under this provision right here? Because the subdivision would not be completed, the road water and sewer would not necessarily be installed, the shallow utilities might not be installed, the plat would not be recorded, but could you be allowed to do that?
I think, in using the E1 language in there, if you demonstrate and show that you're making provisions for those infrastructure, that you would be able to do that. Talks about the issuance of a land use permit, in this section, for construction residential commercial, shall be subject to permit application, providing easements, dedication improvements, and if it already exists, it already exists.
Doesn't exist until the plat is recorded.
Well, you were talking about an executed subdivision agreement, but if you're just saying, okay, say, for example, you, you know, just forget the development that's taking place, and you come in for a house on the lot.
Yes.
This could apply, then. And then, what would you say, I mean, what would you say about that? If it butts, if the infrastructure that butts that lot is appropriate, then you would get the permit. But if there was no access to that parcel on that large track, then you would have to build that access.
Well, but if you were under a subdivision agreement, and you were in the process of building that road, and that, but that road still didn't exist, I mean, this is for residential subdivisions, this is a big deal, that you can go in on a track.
This really wasn't meant for stuff that was in process, I don't believe, with, you know, agreements, development agreements, or subdivision agreements. It was meant to fix infrastructure deficiencies on a basis, just as if you were doing a subdivision.
Yes.
Okay, Dan?
Chapter eight covers subdivisions.
Okay.
This is not intended for them.
All right.
This is based on 21.15, existing, 21.15.150.
Okay.
And that section was designed and passed by the Assembly to make sure that the site condos built their sewer, water, roads, and so forth to handle the density they were creating. We had driveways you couldn't get a fire trip down. We had site condos putting, as you said, 90 homes in a... and on one track and overloading the road. So, initially, it was only applied to site condos. In fact, staff in their comments throughout this process have referred to it as the site condo ordinance. What's happened now, what's on the books now, I know of three or four specific instances where they applied it to single lot construction. One required a street to be paved, another required a street to be developed, and one involved the South Anchorage Power Plant, where they tried to assess some several million dollars to approve West Dowling Road. The problem with this is, is what it really is, is impact fees that come off of single lot developments. It couldn't apply to a single-family house because they're exempted under 2A of this proposed amendment. The question becomes for you guys is, how far and how much do you want them to be able to require off-site developments for what is generally a by right use? One of them was a warehouse, and they wanted a street paved next to the warehouse. Another one was Dr. Maguire's development over off of Fairbank Street, off of International Airport Road, and so on. And the problem, what it is, is it gives staff authority to a certain level to impose what they view as necessary improvements associated with your development, because there's things they would like to have done. It's not bring sewer and water to your development, you got to do that yourself. It's not any of the things that you would need to get a building permit and so on. It's beyond that. Make this street, pave it, do whatever it is that they think you should do beyond that. And there aren't any particular standards associated with it. And it's... It can be very coercive.
Actually, there are standards because it references back to the subdivision regulations. They're the exact same standards out of the subdivision regulations. And Dr. Maguire's property was through the plating process that improvement was being enacted. This provision, this section of the code simply is an infill that gives the municipality the ability to get improvements when they're lacking in infill development.
Yeah, I think that the word is not simply. This is the vehicle that is used to acquire that type of infrastructure that's necessary. For me, there's two things that I have a concern about. One, I don't understand when I read this thing what it actually means, and that's one concern that I have. Whenever I can't understand what it says, I always have a problem. And the second thing is that it's the overarching concern that Mr. Coffey identified. And there are certain legal standards that are used, in other communities at least, to ensure that the scope of the staff jurisdiction is limited and specific to the project itself. This is actually a case from the U.S. Supreme Court about 15 years ago. And basically, what the U.S. Supreme Court requires, and what we have to follow, by the way, is that the only thing that the city can require are those improvements that are directly related and necessary to the project.
Bruce, those are the exact same words that we're putting into the provisionally adopted code at the request of the mayor, that he wanted clarity as to what that... To what degree and when could you do those? We all have to work with rational nexus. That's what the court standard is, both on your... Any cases that come before you, you can only extract where there's a rational nexus to the degree of the impact.
Right, I'm agreeing with you, but I think it'd be advisable to have that particular language in there.
We do, we have that language in...
Maybe it's the...
I think it was in the amendment.
18th April 19th memo.
I didn't say that.
It's in that lengthy amendment section. You guys got the 106 or whatever it is.
Yeah, it says, "Explore potential further clarification. Consider in vain the possibility of irrational nexus connection with..." I would agree. Obviously, we have to do more specific topless, and that's probably the best language to use.
Yeah, so that's what we did. That's what we proposed, I can add. So, that was a concern for a lot of people, that the requirements be appropriate to the process, that there not be an overreaching, overarching demand on an applicant.
Yeah, I think that's my concern as well, too. I think it's appropriate to require that, which is necessary, but insofar as it's not necessary, should not be allowed.
Sure, the standards that they're relating back to are the subdivision standards. And, you know, the subdivision standards are pretty... They're, you know, peripheral improvements are discretionary and interior improvements are mandatory. The standards are spelled out, what type of street you build, depending on ADT, the industrial streets are spelled out. So, there, it's pretty prescriptive as to the requirements. The only time you get into subjective evaluation would be a peripheral street and what's appropriate. And then you would use the rational nexus, just as the planning board would use, the planning commission, what's appropriate on that peripheral street. It could be anywhere from strip paving to a half-street standard.
I would say this, that your explanation provides a lot of clarity of what it would actually be applied to, and perhaps some language can be included that uses some of that language, provide more specificity.
So, maybe 3A could be page 52, 3A could be clarified?
Yeah, I think that 3A needs to be clarified.
You know, I can think of a couple of instances that I'm aware of where they required alleys to be paved, for example. That would be one example. Or there was another example I know regarding nonprofit application where there had to be sidewalks extended beyond the property line.
Yeah, Jim Frederick's.
Yeah, Jim Frederick's project, beyond the property line.
Yeah.
So, those are just two examples, I think, where this situation would be of a concern.
Absolutely.
They may seem minor, but, you know, if you're doing a development, it's not minor. Dan Bowles, you had a comment?
My main concern with this is what's been happening since August 2003, when this section was passed and approved. The abuses, and you've mentioned, there are a few of them, have been numerous, and they continue to be pretty onerous on anybody going in for a change of use on an existing area. We've had PME come back with their request on an interior alteration, a change of use permit, to put curb and gutter in and pave the other half of the street.
Wow.
Now, they say there has to be a rational nexus and these sort of things. We go back to Cutler Hall over on 64th Avenue. They built 64th Avenue curb and gutter, half-street standards, extended the water line, put in the fire hydrant when they put up the first building. When they put in a second unheated building as a storage building, cost under $200,000, PME held up their permit and demanded that they build Burlwood Street now to municipal standards.
How long ago was this?
That was...
In the last six years.
Yeah, that was about five years ago. Because they called me on it, I went down and I asked them what the numbers were. I came down to PME, I said, "Okay, what is the construction cost on this versus the permit cost?" And PME said, "Well, their engineer has to provide that for us." That's the second phase, is they are demanding that the applicant provide all the information. And the Supreme Court decision that you mentioned, one of the Supreme Court justices mentioned in the dissenting argument, that is up to the state, or in this case, the municipality, to provide that type of information. They are supposed to have the studies in place on traffic impact and those sort of things, how much that street can handle, what, over the next how many years, those sort of things, supposed to be in place on the government's end. But the government in this case is making the applicant provide that information.
I think everybody...
So, it becomes very, very onerous.
Probably has their, you know, their stories of what's happening, but I can tell you, since part of this code in here, language needs to be amended because of the reorganization. Some people weren't happy with the reorganization, but it's a fact, and that particular function comes in development services and the community development department. It's no longer the municipal engineers, the building official that makes that decision. And I can tell you that in the past two years, those decisions, those unearthed decisions that you referred to, Dan, aren't being made. And I know, Dan Coffey, you'll bring up the one for the Chugatch Power Plant, but that was in work, that was about three years ago, with respect to, you know, what kind of peripheral improvements should take place on that street. I think there's a difference of opinion as to the degree of improvement. But I can tell you, we look at these to make sure that there's a rational nexus. And the mayor had a very specific interest in this, that he know, you know, through the process, none of us want to see overreaching exactions.
Dan Bowles again?
My example on the one with the interior alteration and change of use, we held a meeting with municipality about last week in Pre-El.
And who did you hold that with? Because PME isn't even part of this discussion anymore. It would have been with Don Kiefer.
Don Kiefer, yes.
And I haven't seen that, so that's new. It's shocking to me, but...
Okay.
Is there any other... Is there any economic... Like changing this, any economic issue? I mean, is there any more fees or is there any more... Is there any more dollars may happen to be spent by changing this around?
I... Well, does someone else want to answer that? The question is, is what's the economic benefit?
Or impact.
Your impact?
By changing it.
Well, I just, you know... Oh, dear. Well, in my opinion, what's happening is the municipality is requiring off-site improvements that are not directly of... Part of the improvement of the lot or the structure that's on the lot. And so, they're pushing what would be the municipality's cost onto private developers and extending the...
So, is that Dan's version of what he says? He refers to his impact fees?
Yes, yes.
So, it's really... It's really an open-ended... It's an open-ended question that you'll never know until you go through the process.
Until you make the application and they say, "We'd like you to pave..." "Oh, by the way, we'd like you to pave this alley." Or, "By the way, we'd like you to improve this road to a higher standard," you know, like what Dan said. Or, "Oh, by the way, you know, we want you to extend the sidewalk past your property to connect to something over here that may not even be there," I think in that particular case, in Jim's case, "but that might be there at some point in time in the future."
So, how do you...
How do you quantify it?
Yeah, how do you quantify something like that?
I don't know.
Is it... Does it have to be put this thing in a box?
Do you make it the maximum percentage of the...
Oh, that's a good idea.
Maximum percentage of the...
Yeah.
The property up to?
Yeah, like if you're going into, for example, to do a project that the off-site costs required by the municipality can be no more than X percentage of...
Of the improvement.
And that's what... Yeah. Of course, that might mean that all projects might have that 3, 4, 5, 10, or 20% associated with it if you...
It might become a standard.
It might become a standard then.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would... So, you have to be careful.
Yeah, well, I think it is a standard, we just don't know it.
Yeah, it's a policy, not a part of...
Yeah, it's a standard now, it's just open-ended. And then it's a... I have the issue where you have to spend the money to see how much it's going to cost and present it, and then arm wrestle it back and forth. Whereas if it's a known entity, a known...
Yeah.
Here it is, including cost analysis, everything upfront, engineering, everything upfront, to get a... To get a... To the deal, then at least it's...
It's there and it's part of pro forma, and you know what the maximum... You know what the maximum of that line item is going to be. Yeah.
I mean, when you're trying to budget something...
You know how it works, this for everybody's education, that, you know, when some advise a parcel that, say, has unapproved road adjacent to it, it's contiguous with a road that accesses, that has curb and gutter, storm drainage, what, you know, should be that requirement for that property? Is it inherent in the value of the sale of that property to this particular person that's going to apply for the building permit? That's where it gets factored out, that, you know, that the person may overbuy or underbuy. And then, when they come in to develop it, then you start having that discussion, "Well, this is way... This is way too much considering what I quote paid for the property, so perhaps it was either overbought or..."
Mark is going to set that.
So, much of it's public improvements that this town's paid for forever. Roads, sidewalks, streets, curbs, gutters, storm drain, you know, it's stuff we all bond for and pay for. So, now you want to get that one property owner to have to pay for it, not only for his property, but adjacent properties up and down the street or around the corner. That, to me, is where the abuse comes in. And discussions with the mayor, he says, "Why are we requiring to do something that we do, that the city does, like paving the road or developing a road?" And that, to me, makes a lot of sense. I have yet to see one of these that made good sense, other than just, "We want it." And that's what scares me.
Stacy?
When I was on the plating board, we had a case where a woman wanted to take her lot, split it into thirds, and give the outside two lots to the next-door neighbors and let them plat their lots bigger in order to give them just some property. She was retiring to Arizona, and so the city was going to require that she develop the road and bring it up to city standards. And we, and the plating board, decided that no, that was not going to be required, as long as those lots did not get built on, that they were just platted in with the other lots. And... But it was quite a surprise. She was very upset to give a piece of property and then turn around and be told that...
I'm sorry, Rich, and then Ray.
Is there any way to more clearly define what is rational nexus connection?
Yeah, it's beyond... Yeah. Good luck with that.
What we're talking about here is an undefined phrase in a proposed Title 21 section that is all things to all people.
Some of the language we came up with was proportional to the impact. I mean, it's still subjective, but, you know...
Proportional to the impact, not to exceed...
Not to exceed, perhaps.
X percent. I think that's a good idea. We've got lots of input here. Okay, Ray, you have a comment, and then...
I just very much like to see this put into a box. Everybody else that developed didn't have to go through these exaction process. We bonded for the infrastructure. And then you make one guy pay for a bunch of improvements, as the surrounding property owners get the benefit of it.
Absolutely.
Their properties go up in value, they've done absolutely nothing, and the last guy that develops gets punished because he's the last guy to develop. The rest of the city, all of us benefit from lower-cost developments. Everybody else did. Everybody bought and rented, and then all of a sudden, costs go up, one guy has to bear the brunt. I don't think it's fair. We, as a city, have been taking care of these collectively. I mean, you pay for my kids to go to school, but you benefit indirectly because my kids, if they're pumping gas or working at the grocery store, you benefit indirectly. We all benefit as a community, and I just... I don't think it's fair to take unquantified masses of dollars and discourage the rest of the town from being developed from an unknown. Because some of these things come to the make or break point within 10, 20, or 30,000, 60,000. I don't know where that number is, but you want to make something expensive, make it an unknown. And when I bid something and I don't know what the parameters are, you bid high. And if you go in, you know, excessively high and go into the bank and say, "Well, I think it's going to be another half a million dollars more than what my costs are because I have to put the contingency in," I just... I think it's crazy. Might be for anything we can do to put a box in around this thing.
AWU used to have a formula where if you had to oversize your pie... AWU used to have a formula where if you had to oversize your pie, that people then, the other property owners, when they hooked up, there was a pro ration, there was a front fee.
Front fee.
Yeah. And that might be something to work, look into, as how they did it.
I would also be in favor of if you had a percentage setup, that you could deduct the amount that the state would come in and exact for you for a stoplight or any other off-site improvement, to help encourage development and quantify some of these costs that are unknowns.
Yeah. I forgot about stoplights. That's a good point. They're expensive. $250,000. Bruce?
Yeah, I think that.
Wow.
This is a difficult one, because you have any number of different situations, and it's going to be difficult to quantify each and every one of those. At the same time, I'm not sure that I would necessarily agree with a particular percentage or a cost figure, unless there was a good reason for it. If there's a good reason for it, I would definitely support it. But I think that mostly what I'm concerned about this is the better explanation of relationship and connection, and also where it is to be applied and not applied. There's no specificity here. Jerry provides a specificity. Why can't we get additional specificity so we can eliminate the abuses? So I would suggest that we return this to administration and give guidance to them to provide additional specificity to identify constraints. And if they can identify a percentage amount or other factors, fine.
Mr. Potter?
Well, since I didn't get a chance to type for Community Council.
Yes, that is correct. You did not. You did not. That is correct.
I really wanted to.
I know you did.
On this one, on the rational nexus, it's very, very difficult, because there are a lot of uses that may cost a lot of money when you look at the actual facility, like the power plant. Hundreds of millions of dollars. And yet, there's, you know, a handful of employees, there's very little traffic when the project's done, doesn't use a lot of sewer, doesn't use a lot of water, doesn't draw on much of anything. And yet, if you did a percentage of the value of the facility, they'd have a huge number. And it isn't at all related to what their usage would be. I'll give you a real life example, and that was the Shaw and Loop project, the first one, over next to Mountain View Marina. When that was done, the city required that half of the length of the alley be paved. Now, there's no other paved alleys in Mountain View, but they wanted that paved and would not consider that to grade it appropriately meant that you created drop-off issues with the adjacent privately held properties. And some of that has to be taken into consideration when you're looking at the practicality of having half of an alley done impacting adjacent property owners, because you, as a private property owner, don't have the same rights that the city has when they go to do improvements and public control. So I just think going to a strict standard of a certain percentage isn't always the answer.
Okay. Any other comments? I think we've.
I think that my, my line of thought is that either, if we decide that we should allow it, I recommend that they continue to do it, then there's, there's issues to what extent. And if we, the policy that we want to adopt and recommend is that we don't allow it. We don't, can't do it, period. I think that was, really, that's really the question. And if you do, then it's got to be in some tight box.
The box.
Which, which makes it a lot more cumbersome. If you don't, then you don't have to, you don't have to answer that question.
So your position would be that there should be no requirement for off-site improvements?
Well, my initial reaction is that, but I'm sure there's, there's examples out there where something, something should happen.
Sure, like an extra turning lane for Walmart, you know, expansion, I mean, you know.
You know, traffic or water and sewer upgrade, you know, I don't know. But, but, you know, I don't think there's a catch-all box for yes or no, you know, for a no. So I think yes, and so now it's really make the box so defined that everybody has, knows what their, what their, what their exposure is.
Okay. Ray?
I just, I'm going along with you. How did we make it since 1915 this far without? No, we're 99% developed.
Well, they're trying to get upgrades now. Yeah, that's what they're trying to do. They're trying to get upgrades now, right?
No, I understand. But what, I just don't think that the last few property owners, because they waited to develop, should have to bear the brunt.
I agree. And if they do, it should be a very, very small percentage of the building cost.
It has to be commensurate with the project.
Yeah, yeah. And how to put that in a box and how to define it is the issue.
The only point I was making is he said, well, it's going to be extremely tough to put it in a box.
Yeah.
So why not just get rid of it? And if that's, if it's so tough to put it in a box, we did fine without it. Not fine, but we made it.
But we don't know this difficulty yet. We haven't really got the response back from staff. I know we let them try to develop.
Sorry, I'm just passionate about it. I apologize.
And I respect you for that. It's just that I think that rather than saying no right now, it's very good direction is to have to say, give us some box parameters if you don't.
Okay.
And it's going to be tough, but that's better than where we are right now.
All right. So let's try, let's see if staff can come back with something in regards to all of that. Moving on, Sally.
Number four is kind of a little bit of a, should go a little faster, a little bit of a carryover from the overlap between planning and zoning and UDC. I think we pretty much discussed that overall, but the question was specifically street and trail review. Should both commissions be involved in that? Should streets go to planning and zoning, trails to UDC, or do you want to continue to have both involved? If you look at the chart 2102-1, both commissions are involved. And the question is just whether you want to continue to have it that way, or you want to have a separation?
21 dash what?
Oh, 2-1.
What page it on, tell us.
Page 10.
Huh?
Oh, page 10.
There?
Page 2-1.
Way back here?
It's on page 10.
Page, page 84, is it up to page 10?
Page 10, it's the table.
And it's on page seven of, oh, I'm sorry, Exhibit C in the Dan Coffey materials.
It's on page 83 and 84 of the proposed revised, provisionally adopted with technical edits.
It's on the one that was handed out at the public meeting, G1, P and Z, and 10. What was their performance? And it goes on.
All right.
83, 84, 85, 86. Ooh, goes all the way to 87. This is going to be shorter, huh?
Well, because I think the only issue, I think last time the discussion was, you wanted to return the functions of planning and zoning that were changed, to go back to planning and zoning.
That's correct.
And this issue that was raised is specifically, some of the comments were, you didn't want overlap between the two commissions. And so when you look at the exhibit, even if you put back to the way it was, you would still have an overlap between streets and trails between the two commissions. And do you, is that okay, or do you want to change that?
I mean, streets with P and Z and trails with UDC.
Well, or do you want, right now, they would both be reviewed, both be a review.
By P and Z?
Yes. And do you want it to go where P and Z only reduces streets and UDC only reduces trails?
We, we, I believe reached consensus that the current responsibilities for UDC and the Planning and Zoning Commission should remain the same in the provisionally adopted chapters. In other words, however it works now is how it should be maintained in the future, Title 21. Yeah. Is there any comment?
After I got off to the assembly, Debbie Oceander came to me because this street and, street and trail review thing came up after I was gone.
Right.
And she said, I don't want it to be divided this way. This was her take. She said, would you write something else? I did. It's in Section H. She wanted one thing to one and the other thing to the other, so you didn't have to go back and forth. So that's, that's what I did.
Is H to H?
It's H, it's 3H.
It's, yeah, page 1 of H. Exhibit H.
Exhibit H to Section 3.
And in summary, it splits it?
It puts one to one, puts streets to P and Z. But what happens is, most of the streets is done by you guys, and then the, the extraneous stuff on the side, it went to the other, to UDC. And on trails, it was the opposite. And she wanted to keep it simple for people. I don't disagree with her, but I was, was operating under her instructions.
Page 65, 35. Is that here?
Jerry, can, if you have to go to both commissions, can it run concurrently, or do you have to have approval from one before you can then go to the other? Because therein lies the problem, as far as I'm concerned. It's a timing issue.
Well, I don't know. Tim probably can speak to it better than me. I think we do try to run them concurrently within, you know, a certain period of time.
You know, I think that when I'm looking at the Exhibit H, and asking myself the question, does that make sense? My guess, the answer to myself is generally yes, it does make sense. Like little I, they have major open-use trails that are with UDC. But the stuff that some park plans or other plans have adopted, they don't have to go through a review process. That's what this is saying here, as I understand it. Can you correct me if I'm wrong a bit?
Right.
Because you've already done the review already, done the approval for the plan.
Right.
I guess what I'm trying to say here is that this provides additional clarity. And so, for example, you, what you're focusing on are new trails, not you servicing, repair, or maintenance of new or existing roads. Focusing on new facilities. And that language is the specificity that you need to have, I think, in order to make sure that you are reviewing the way you think it should.
When you pointed your finger, what were you pointing your finger at?
Sorry.
This is Exhibit 3.
This is applicable to specific trails, number 2. And I'm reading the section where it says, to applicator to specific trails. And my comment on, isn't it nice that we have specificity now, particularly with A, and to the left of the extension, little I. This makes clear that it doesn't apply to resurfing, maintenance, or things of that nature. And I says it applies only to these big things, and little I says, well, it's already part of a park plan that was viewed anyway, you don't have to do it. All of those make sense to me.
And then, if I might, we kept the review process whereby you would go through the things, but we allowed you to complete the review process for streets. And we allowed them to do their review process, and then complete those review process with the constraints that Mr. Belch just pointed out, for the trails. So it wasn't necessary for you to deal with these major trail questions. They can do it. It wasn't necessary for them to deal with the minor street stuff that did now affect. I, I think if you let it go, Debbie's going to do it anyway, so.
That's probably true.
Just a point of information, a while back, the commission requested a diagram of the current process that was agreed to with the state. That's in your materials distributed on Friday in Exhibit A. That and the other information about the background behind the current process is on Pages 21 and 22. And then following Page 22 is that diagram of the current process. So you have that background.
This was an email.
That was not emailed, that was.
Yes.
They filed it.
Can I ask Mr. Coffey a question?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Coffey, I'm looking at your report now on Exhibit H.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm looking at, and the question I have is that when I reviewed this, it's that if your recommendation to approve it this way, and by what I mean is that there are certain areas that you accept, or you say, okay, and certain things that are deleted, that you recommend delete, and certain things that you worry differently, I'm going to worry if you have provided you. So my understanding of the situation is, if we adopt this, it would be better reflected in the process. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and there's a couple of things, like at the very end, is where does the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the UDC on respect to the supporting buildings? I put requires amendment to existing appeal provisions, but I don't write it. That's a minor thing. If you're in UDC, you go one way, and if you're P and Z, you probably go another. But I didn't presume that I knew which way that would go on that. But other than that, yes.
I guess when I reviewed this, my sense was, this was a better capturing of what really is to purr. So I was comfortable with the language. That's my take on it.
And what process would that be, Bruce? I'm curious.
It's the one that's recommended in Exhibit H, in Mr. Coffey's report.
Do you have a copy of this?
It's in that book.
Yeah, I know. Does staff have it?
I don't know. I think so.
Yeah.
If I have it, they have.
Yeah, you have it. Someone has it. Someone has it. Thank you, Department.
Did I hand it out at the meeting?
You did hand them out at the meeting.
So you're aware of how the commission?
And I held all of them.
Jerry?
So aware how the planning commission has set this up in the past. We, we had the process where the concept report, and the commissions looked at this, but the concept report come to the commission, the commission made comments, the planner would go back, and the DSR would come back at about 35%, come back to P and Z. The way this is set up, after that, once the commission's made all its input, it would go to UDC. Are you saying to change this process?
No.
Okay. Because this seems to.
It's the same process, it's just confined to one or the other. It's still got the 35% and the 65% review, all those approval processes. There's no point changing them, they work well. It's just the hopping back and forth.
So you're saying to eliminate the UDC as a final authority on this process, then?
So currently, UDC will look at this at the, I forget what percent, design phase. But basically, they look at the landscaping and the pedestrian facilities. So on the streets, under the proposal, I guess, of applying and zoning, that would look at the landscaping and pedestrian facilities. Is that one, for streets? That's a change from.
Actually, I'm okay with that, because it's a street. As an integrated designer, it's trying to review.
Like Strawberry Road, for example?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That makes it clear.
All right. Okay.
Is everyone on board on that?
I think so, because they were quiet. And so if they're quiet, that means there's agreement. Okay.
Ma'am, so how long are we going to go to this?
Um, I think we're going to go to 8:30. All right? Okay, we're going to go to 8:30. All right, three hours is enough.
Three hours. And we read it last time.
Yes, three hours is enough. All right. All right. Item number five. For amendments to Title, go ahead, Sally, please.
No, 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 no. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Thank you. For amendments to Title 21 after its adoption, other than the amendments discussed at last work session, should there be an expedited process? Basically, we talked about the oops amendments at the last work session, and the question is, for other types of amendments, and it's 21. And?
We got public done. We just finished.
Yeah. Should there be an expedited? Well, the oops ones are the ones where there's a conflicting provision on unintended consequences. So more major.
Oh, you're saying that you're trying to distinction between oops changes, mistakes, specific policy changes?
Yes. Because there is a procedure, there is a procedure in place for an expedited process if it's one of those. Except then the question is, well, what if it's not? Any answers acceptable?
I mean, if that's what we're talking about here, there is a recommendation by staff, by the way, which basically says, what's it say? It says, it has a date of approval and ordinance of six months. Says the effective date is six months from the date of approval of ordinance. That's one recommendation from staff. And the other recommendation, I gotta find it here, some on paper. Tell me, Dave, what'd you recommend?
He looks like a Dave today.
Do you wanna be a Dave instead of a Tom?
Wait till 8:30, woman guy.
David's a bigger check, too. So, are we talking about the expedited approval process?
Yeah, we're talking about the expedited.
So that, the department recommendation is on pages 29 and 30 of the issued response that we've just distributed.
All right, yeah. Yeah, okay. Now I hear you. Okay. And they're basically saying, delete this section, says the first two years. Basically saying is that any time after the damn thing's adopted. You can go through a technical amendment, give us the oops. That's a good thing. And they make sense. And they're also proposing a different date of adoption.
Yeah, it's my last name.
And they're also saying, however, the director will notify the commission when the amendments are being submitted to the Assembly.
And, I guess, and so what? I mean, if they may notify us when the amendment is going to the Assembly, what does that provide us?
Well, we talked about last time was that at that point, you would have a here, you would have a meeting on an expedited basis and submit your comments to the Assembly. So that would be, that section would be beefed up a little bit from what Bruce is looking at, based on the last work session.
That's what we needed to clear up.
Yeah, that's what we need to clear up, right.
Something Dan brought up was that the frequency of these things coming up, how frequent can they, if you've got a project and he's got a project? They find an oops on his project, so they go get a determination, and you're almost complete, can they come back to you? And take that oops determination and apply it to you? And how often can this happen? Or should it happen to existing projects?
Well, isn't there language in here that says, what one oops applies to doesn't necessarily apply to another? Is that in there somewhere?
Is there a maximum frequency that you can keep finding these things? Or is every six months? No, there's no time specificity now. Basically, when they find a problem, they can do something about the problems. That's what we think about. If they find it in year six, they can do it. If you find it in year one, they can do it. And have to inform the commission about that. And what this is saying here is that for little bitty stuff, it's the way we're gonna get it, there are really conflicts and inconsistencies and unintended consequences. Those he has authority to do, an expedited, no other does he have the authority to expedite. But they have to go through a normal process. So if you're talking about major policy shifts.
That was my understanding.
If they're not major policy shifts, there is no change. This does not give them authority to do that. Sorry, Jerry.
The oops thing would notify the commission if it's a technical thing. Just notify us.
Right.
And, but if it's a policy change, I mean, it could be a huge policy. So we need to have an expedited process to make a determination on that.
Well, he only has the authority to, okay, you're saying that if the oops is a major policy change?
No.
Okay. Well, what I'm reading here is that it's an inconsistency, a conflict, unintended consequences, where it's like a technical fix, and there's lots of those problems that are gonna have to occur. He can go forward on expedited basis to the Assembly, but letting the commission know. To me, those are small potatoes. I'll just characterize it that way.
I mean, he would do that anyway.
And so if it's a policy change, he does not have the authority under this to do that. Then if it's a policy change, he has to go through a normal text amendments, normal process. But you did not given the authority to do that in this section here, because of the wording of this.
Right.
And the only question is whether there should be a quicker process for those types of what they would have called text amendments.
Well, you know, there's no, the only thing you can do really in that situation is you can change your agenda. Okay, that's a possibility, but that's wholly at the responsibility, authority of the planning commission. Because you've got a certain number of steps to go through, they're identified by code for a text change, and you can't do anything about that. So the only thing you can really do to expedite.
Call a special meeting.
Call a special meeting. You can put on an earlier agenda. That's all sort of jurisdiction.
So you can do a 70-day notice to a special meeting.
Yeah.
And not wait for the next regular.
But the point is, he does not have the authority to make major changes. It has to go through the planning commission. The planning commission has that responsibility.
Is there any reason we couldn't put it on every agenda, that we would address anything that comes up from the last meeting? So you get kind of like a consent agenda that we have now, that, you know, it's on every, it's on every agenda. If there may or may not be anything there, is there any reason we couldn't do that to speed that up, so there doesn't have to be that process?
I think that's an excellent idea, actually.
I don't know what the definition of policy change.
I don't know.
What does that mean? What is that?
Well, that's my concern. What someone, what someone's little oops is, maybe a major policy change to someone else.
Well, if it's actually changed, it could be a major policy change.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Child, it will, or?
Yeah. Or the substitution of subdivision for a lot. I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a huge policy change. But it was identified as a technical amendment.
Maybe.
I think it's in the eye of the planning commission.
Can I ask Dan?
That is who decides whether it's a policy issue.
That's a very good point.
May I ask Dan Bowles to weigh in?
Yes.
Okay, the home builder's main objection was that you would start a project, it would be a substantive change to the code, and in the middle of your project, you would be switching horses. That was their main concern.
But they've written a savings clause for that already. It's in there. It says, basically, if you're underway, you're constructing, and you're permitting, then all of the changes that occur subsequent to the adoption of this, or, you know, the whole Title 21, the same allowances will exist, but you'll go under the old.
You're in the process, you've come to the municipality, you've had preliminary meetings, you've got your 65 percent plans. And now, where are you at? You come into the building safety, turn your plans in, and now you've got an oops clause. Because they've changed the code the last 30 days. That's why, that is why the home builders wanted, you know, the code to only be changed every year or so, and they could rely on that.
Was it just the text or the little inconsistency as well?
What's a little inconsistency? Lot and subdivision?
I thought we talked about this, what Terry said, about, about trying to have a process where we're, it's on every agenda, so there would be no issue about being quick for decision. And that we're the, we're the appropriate body that understands the code better than pretty much most everybody, or we should. And I'm not saying I do. I need to close. So, but it goes through the body with the staff, and what's going on with the petitioner, or what the person has had, has the problem, with the expedited recommendation against the Assembly. I thought that's what we asked for, that that was possible, but I don't see that. Isn't that what?
We did, we absolutely did have that discussion.
The enforcement provision, building safety has the 30-day notice. If they come up with a particular decision on an interpretation of code.
Yes.
They have to issue a 30-day notice so that everybody's on board, and you're not in the middle of a framing project, and they decide that your, your hold downs can't be more than two inches off the plate or something.
Right.
Yeah, think about us here, Ray. We may think it's a major policy or not, but the public has no clue what's going on. And it's expedited, go to the Assembly. The Assembly doesn't, no one testifies, no one says anything, they don't know. Everybody, you know, everybody's in the dark, and they pass something that has an unintended consequence, makes it worse. And there's a public process for.
That's the trade-off we had here. Everybody's saying, we're gonna have these major problems with the code, and we have to fix it quickly. That's what we heard. And so there has to be a process for that. And that's the normal business.
But that, but that's, that's the end result of changing this. And you have to understand, you have to accept that. That's, you can't be perfect, and there's gonna be tweaks to it. And that's just, that's just the reality. Now, if you come up with extended way, expedited way for everybody involved, has an opportunity to comment, so the best decision is made. But that takes time. And I don't know, the oops thing, you know, it goes to the policy. Do we, the whole thing, do you pass a change now, or just don't do anything because you're afraid of the oops?
What about this? What about, you know, changing it? It says right now, however the director will notify the commission when the amendments are being submitted to the Assembly. Why don't we say, however the director will notify the commission prior to the act, about one day amendments, prior to when the amendments are being submitted to the Assembly? So you see it, the commission sees it before it goes to the Assembly. So it can be on consent agenda, for example. You can actually see it, and there can be a staff report on what they're doing.
I thought these were gonna be concurrent, and we were gonna have a, it's gonna go to the top of our agenda, and we were gonna change and look at it.
Well, maybe Dan can answer this. Dan, if you're an Assembly member, one of us here, and you see something like this comes up, where are you gonna get your, where are you gonna get your, and where do you want your input from?
You want your input from the, from the person who would be affected, and you'd want your input from the, from the staff.
And the commission.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about in the oops thing. Sure, of course you'd like to have that. Yeah. So if you can arrange it so that it happens, the expressed danger was, it would be, I think the word was technical or minor, we'd be citing one section to go to, to look for, and it would really end as different subsections, not things that would have significant and far-reaching impacts on anybody. I mean, and I don't know how you define that, but of course we would like, as an Assembly member, I wanted to have P and Z's recommendation, because there's a lot of expertise. Okay? So if you can do that, but the Assembly meets at least twice a month, so do you. So how much, how long does it take to fix that? Well, you're meeting daily.
Okay, we have lots of comments here. Sally?
I just wanted to point out, what I thought we, we, you all, had reached a consensus on, was that the 10-day notice that was required to be given to the Assembly regarding, regarding an ordinance amendment, concurrently with the notice to the Assembly, notice would be given to this commission. You would then put it as a priority. You would promptly schedule a meeting, make the ordinance amendment a priority. You would then put your information, and it would go forward, so that you would be in the Assembly at the same time the Assembly was looking at it.
A recommendation.
Yes.
These are for the oops types of amendments.
Right. And that's why I'm suggesting, prior to the authorization, the action taken by the Assembly on the authorization. It's inserting that language there, so that can accomplish, that can actually occur.
Right. And I like Commissioner Park's recommendation, that we have on the consent agenda, after this is passed and resolved, on the consent agenda, we have Title 21 matters. And then, we can have a packet of information about all that, and if any of the commissioners have a concern about any of those textual or other types of changes, they can pull it on the consent agenda, from the consent agenda, and we can have discussion about it.
Just like we would have any consent agenda item.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. Okay, is everyone in agreement on that matter? All right. Very good.
That way, the planning commission will, in effect, determine what is policy.
That's correct.
Yes. That's exactly right.
Very nicely done.
Yes. Good. All right. Any other comments on item number five? Okay, moving on to item number six.
Sally, would you like to give us a second?
Should the setback type law coverage requirements remain as they currently exist in the code, which could be changed? It's Title 21, 06, 03, oh, page 19 of the Coffey materials. That's also in 21, 06, 02.
350 to what?
350 to the, in the. How can we answer this question when I'm going through this for what section is here?
Chapter 6.
Chapter 6? Yeah. I don't feel like I can answer this question, so I'll review this. Move on. What is it? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. What this is saying is that, you know, do you wanna keep all the existing type laws and setup requirements as are on the code right now? My answer is.
As you provisionally adopted.
Oh, and I'm still the same answer. I want to have the ability to go to the districts, and then if it's the districts, I mean this.
I agree. Meaning the map.
No. I mean, the districts, it'd be nice to have a map, though.
The map.
Yeah.
I'd like that map.
You have to like that map.
We all want that map. Okay.
And there will be an issue about you adopt the districts prior to the map, right? There is gonna be a explanation.
Right. And we'll get back to that. Okay. All right. And I suspect you feel, everyone feels the same way about item number seven.
Yes.
Okay. Should usable open space be required in multifamily high-density developments? Should usable open space be required in commercial development? That's a policy. Yep. So, item number eight, Sally.
Overall, should the design criteria manual and user's guide serve? Should they be approved by the Assembly? Should they be part of the Title 21 review process? Discussion on these was the issue that was raised, and it's page 22 of the Coffey materials.
Ms. Dean, do you have a comment that you would like to make?
Just, both of them need to be actually part of Title 21. They need to be approved by the Assembly. They need to go through a process of approval, instead of just being a policy that can randomly be changed by the city and affect everybody.
Amen.
Do we have any other amens?
I'll do a bless you father.
Yeah, yeah. Is there any other discussion?
Or maybe in the name of the Father.
So where do we say it, and how do we say it?
Well, I guess that is, that really becomes the issue. I think neither one of these two, well, first of all, there is no user's guide at this particular point in time. But the design criteria manual does exist and is changed, I would say, at will, you know? And there is no formula for that change, you know, that I'm aware of, at least, as terms of when those changes occur, and what the appropriate notice should be for those changes. And so I think we need to be a little more specific in what our recommendation is.
Whatever's approved will dictate a change in these. Right?
You mean in terms of?
The design criteria.
Yeah.
And the user's, and the user's guide. If we change this, it will have effect. Huh?
There's no even.
I mean, if there would be, if there was, if there was, it would have an effect.
Yeah, there's a relationship.
There's a relationship. So, so, so would it be simpler to say that the design criteria manual be developed, recommended manual be developed, recommended a new one be developed after this to be reviewed by Planning and Zoning and then ultimately approved by the Assembly?
You could do that, but it doesn't come under the authority of the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
It's only referenced three locations in Title 21. And that's in the subdivision section that says the roads shall be constructed to the DCM standards. It's a public works document that, you know, that discussion's taking place right now as to, you know, how it's approved and how it's amended. It's a technical engineering construction specification kind of methodology document. And some people like things that are in there and some people don't. They don't like the process, but it really doesn't have anything to do with Title 21. Other than being referenced that the streets shall be constructed to those standards. The user's guide was to be for illustrations on how to apply Title 21. And it's something the Department was going to create. And, you know, we can certainly take that direction, that it be moved forward and made part of the code. That's not a problem.
The user's guide, which one is not a problem?
The user's guide, because that is what's under the control of the Department and the Commission. But the user's guide really wasn't meant to be regulatory per se. It was meant to interpret the code for people to be able to graphically see how to apply it easily. That's really what it was intended to do.
Right. Like currently, there is actually quite a bit of information about their, how to apply for rezone or what process you're going through, and it's scattered. And so a lot of that information about process for people would be like one-stop shopping.
The worksheets are now...
I'm sorry?
The worksheets on how to do something.
Yeah.
I mean, it's similar to, I wouldn't call it a user guide, but yes, I understand.
Well, that would be a major part of it.
It was to be like those, but with illustrations.
Yeah, I understand. I... Is there a notice provision if you make a change?
In the user's guide?
Or the design criteria?
No, that's, it's a big debate right now as to how it's created and how it's changed and who...
But there's no requirement if you change it to let anybody know you're changing it?
Well, they have a process. They have a process. Whether it's a good process or not is debatable.
So I think the will of the Commission, based upon our prior discussions and our amends, is that even though the design criteria manual is only referenced three times in these provisionally adopted chapters, that we want to expand that reference. And we want to establish, I guess we want to put our foot in the puddle, so to speak. And although we're probably not interested so much in the very technical aspects that your, you know, engineering committee is, we are interested in establishing a protocol or a procedure that is going to regulate the number of changes or the timing of the changes. And we're very interested, I believe, in having a public review process.
I'll pass that on to the Public Works Director.
You should.
I will.
Because it's in his court.
I will. It's his arena.
It's a different department.
Jared, did you say it was just in substitutions?
It was in three, when I did a, when I did a search on the current code, it's only in three of the sections of the current code.
Says the Municipal Engineers should develop, implement, maintain various guide manuals and shall provide standards and guidelines to the section.
I should have made it clear.
Design criteria manual and the storm water treatment manual.
Dana, because I should have made it clear that I was looking in current code.
Oh.
There's no Dr. Cokey.
Shouldn't the documentation, I don't think they're currently defined what they are referenced, but I don't think there's a definition with the scope and purpose on those documents.
The DCM?
Yeah.
It's a public works document. It's for...
And we're gonna represent, you know, it stays within its existing scope. It doesn't become a tool for other purposes.
Right. So a definition of what the design criteria manual is and what its purpose is should be expanded in this, in this document. Okay?
We think that's easy.
Well, I mean, do we have, I mean, it gets back to the question of jurisdiction. We can define it, but does it have any effect if it's under the authority, if it's not under Planning and zoning commission authority, question of status?
Well, let's go back to our charter. And I guess we have very broad powers, the things that affect the economics of this community, I guess, under which the design criteria manual would follow, fall.
Planning and development.
Yeah, under planning and development. Right.
I'm just simple-minded here, but you guys taught me that this is the law. And if it makes it into here, it's the law, right? If you gotta go through the commission?
Refer to one there.
Right. But if the Planning and Zoning Commission gets to review, and it's in here, the Planning and Zoning Commission gets to review. If there's additional stipulations...
The way you might want to do it is add to your duties the responsibility for the review and approval of the urban design manual on the next...
Resigned cases.
Well, I think, I think what, what the community wants, as I have been told peripherally, is they want a, they want to have a public review.
They should take that up with the Public Works Director.
Well, we know...
Jerry?
You're not in a position to say...
Yeah.
You're all being grabbing some power. We want some.
Yeah, this is a power...
Am I right?
Thanks, Dana.
You know, call, space, but...
Jerry's saying it's not my job. Review capital, trim a program, and then budget some things of that nature. There's a lot of similarities.
You know, what we should do is get you the DCM. And so you, we have engineers here. They would probably love to look at the DCM, but I don't, I'm not sure that the rest of you would be too excited.
Let's take a look at it. What do you think?
Maybe our new member.
Yeah.
I know I thought I kept to get a copy of the DCM when the Assembly workshop was talking about it. And I know that, I don't think I ever got it.
Yeah.
It's not that I wanna be...
You don't need to see it.
I don't wanna get any of my work. But there would be, it would be nice that it had to go through another body. There had to be a notice process. And so that when there are gonna be changes, if there isn't road, road design changes in the middle of a project and...
It's not the design of the road, because those are set out in code. Those are pretty much set out in code. This is how you build it. Technical part.
Jerry, the DCM is very associated with implementing what gets built. I can give you specific examples where we have a design done, we have a permit issued to go build a road. It blows out, we go to start building a road. To the standards that were approved in our permit, and Public Works inspector will come out and say, that insulation does not meet the DCM standards because we changed them this winter. So everything had been ordered in advance based on approved and signed plans by the city, and it still changes. Somebody needs to have a process that if you get a design done, that the design criteria manual does mysteriously get modified through the winter or through the year and your health to a different standard.
I think it's in play, I think it's in play now to make it regulation, that it would take a process before the Assembly to make changes of that, that there are some Assembly members that would like to see it adopted as a regulation to address that particular issue. But it's, you know, it's under, it's under Public Works Director's authority. I can pass it along, what your concerns and interests are.
Well, I think we need, our chairman needs to write a letter to the mayor suggesting, if that's what we're, if we think it ought to be done. Because it's not, it's not something that's in your purse.
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure a legal opinion would help, but I think, you know, your concern well expressed. It's all around the table, that people would like to ensure that it's not changed at will. So that's certainly appropriate if the Commission wants to do that.
Yeah, I think at will is the right terminology, that that's now how the development community feels, that it's changed at will. Mr. Coffee?
Yeah, I took this issue to the city attorney. And he acknowledged that these sorts of things are regulatory in nature. And on page 23 is a definition in our code, what is a regulation. And he said it had been ignored for years. And he didn't seem too concerned about it. But then again, he doesn't have to try to develop anything or build a road as Mr. Potter just pointed out. The reason I brought it to your attention in my little submittal to you was, since you're adopting or making a recommendation for adoption of a code, I didn't want you to include, or think it was appropriate to include, things like the DCM and these other things that are not, that are clearly regulations but have not been adopted as required by law in there. I wanted to point out the potential problem to you. So if they are in fact, now, if the user's guide is described as Jerry and Tom did, and saying, you know, you gotta file seven copies and you gotta pay a $50 fee or whatever, that is clearly the kind of thing that's, that's not necessarily a regulation because it's just telling you how to do it, not, but it's not setting standards and so on, which are either gonna be in code or regulation. And one other thing, the other thing that could be, is the state has a process for adopting regulations. And it involves notice, opportunity to be heard, public hearing, a period for comment and so on, and then adoption. Now, we could, as a community, we could adopt a similar way. But the way we have adopted is, it says it must be approved by, approved by resolution or ordinance by the Assembly, a regulation. So that's the policy or the law.
In my recent discussions with Dennis, he believes it probably should be a regulation as well.
So he already believes it. Wouldn't hurt for you to write a letter? If that's what aren't you?
I'll be writing a letter.
Sally will be, so be writing a letter. All right, okay. And I would like to see, I would like to see the users, I'd like to see a definition of the user's guide. I think a little more elaboration in terms of what Tom and Jerry have described as the user's guide. My fear when it comes to the user's guide is the graphic illustrations sort of defining the light prism and all of that sort of thing. I would like not to see that in the user's guide.
There need to be a lot of those disclaimers in that it's not regulatory, it's meant to be as a guide. So all that stuff has to be structured.
What you currently have is very useful. I mean, handouts.
We went to great lengths to create those.
I mean, very, very useful. For somebody that comes in and wants to build a deck and they're a home builder, they come in and look at it and it gives them an idea of what they can do. They're gonna do a subdivision, what's the plans, you know, when you gotta go higher. I think you gotta have that. Because ordinary people that don't do these every day need somewhere to go that is not this code.
We can do that.
All right.
And I think if the scope was defined in here somewhere, then I don't know that it has to be approved as long as, this is what it is and it is.
Yep, I agree. I think we're all in agreement on that.
We can always change our minds, too, can't we?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
It's a means to the same end, right?
As long as it's fine, we don't have to approve page by page. It's the same.
Okay, item number nine.
You know, I was gonna say the next four items are really all related to, you know, the review of the district. And they're related, should be postponed.
The next two items, you said nine and seven.
It's four.
Nine and seven.
Number nine, I mean, I'm looking at Coffee's description and recommendation on page 23, section...
Section what?
Seven.
I think it might be helpful to get some...
No, but you don't wanna wait till you get to 07 and miss the subdivision part of it?
Well, I think, I think so. But here is the issue, what is connectivity and explain it? What's the concept? And how do you implement it? What's the criteria? Is that right?
Which one is this? 060?
Yeah.
Well, it's specific to, I think the staff has agreed to delete that connectivity index. Although you maintain connectivity external from your subdivisions, but you don't have to meet some kind of connectivity criteria internal to yourself.
Within the subdivision.
Am I right, Tom? You did say that somewhere, I thought.
It's in an amendment.
Recommend, delete this section, establish a connectivity index.
Yeah, it deletes the connectivity index. The amendment does.
Internal street connectivity connectivity index is on page 3716 in our book and it's all grayed out. It's all...
316.
Yes, yes. Okay, all right, that takes care of that one. I would like to have a brief discussion about landscaping, maybe not specifically in terms of the units and that sort of thing. But to me, landscaping is one of the least expensive, although I understand the cost of trees, you know, and the cost of installation. But it is the one way to help beautify our city that can be, from a residential point of view, it can be passed on, it can be from one of three different entities. It can come from the developer, it can come from the builder, or it can come from the homeowner. So I am in favor of increased landscaping standards, at least on a residential basis, because I believe that it helps create value and perceive value as well as improving the sort of streetscaping quality of life. And it's a cost that can be spread out to three different entities. And so I strongly support the landscaping. On a commercial basis, I support the bonding of landscaping because so often we see major landscaping go in without any, including from the city, mind you, where they spend great amounts of money installing landscaping and there's no money left the following year for maintenance and watering and all that sort of thing. So the landscaping, the cost, the initial cost of the landscaping is wasted.
That's why they have a five-year warranty on subdivisions, right? That's why we have a five-year warranty on subdivisions.
Well, we do have a warranty on subdivisions to...
You're dealing with the commercial. When a guy puts in trees in a commercial, he's got a two-year requirement, right?
If he can get it on warranty, if he can get it on, if he can get it signed off, that's why I mean five...
But there's no, there's no, there's no follow-through, basically, I would say that, if a tree dies or a shrub dies or...
Bumbooski beat in mine. Can we plant the kind that they don't eat?
Well, you know, you can have moose guards. You know, they cost about 50 bucks.
Yeah, and it's ugly. And again, I keep...
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll complain about having moose guards. We'll have to plant your moose guards.
Can we shoot the moose?
You make it look pretty good landscaping and you put a moose guard around it and the moose come and eat it. You know, they'll eat if you don't have it. So it's like, it's like you're damned if you do and damned if you don't.
And then Anchorage District points out that you're just creating problems with sight lines for supervision of the children and you're creating places for people.
Well, I see, I'm not gonna win this argument, but I would like you, I would like you to do one thing as just a favor.
Muzzle loader?
Have you been drinking down there?
I can.
What, you have a flask in that jacket of yours or what's going on down there? I guess I would like you to all take a drive down Southport Drive, which is truly, in my opinion, the most beautiful street in all of Anchorage. And look at that landscaping. And, you know, it's developer expense and then the city rebuilt it and, you know, and yes, there's moose guard around it and all that sort of thing. But, you know, that is an example of what good landscaping can do to values in a subdivision and in a master plan community.
I do appreciate the big trees. It is beautiful. There's a lot of big spruce trees there, too, but they've done a nice job on that.
And I will tell you, that is one of the most desirable communities, that those homes sell within a matter of days if they're properly priced. And a lot of that, and it is a walking community. People walk up and down that, that street. So, anyway.
So what we see is the, the least expensive part of landscaping is actually purchasing and the first installation. Most expensive is to keep replacing and they either don't make it, they didn't make the trip, I mean, you don't know until next season, or, for variety of reasons, moose, snowfall, lack of maintenance, whatever. That tends to drive the cost up quite a bit. And it's, the municipality is a little different than the state. The state, you know, the warranty is completely different. They, you know, you seed it and it starts to germinate, you water it to a certain thing that should pay you for the water, you know, by the gallon to keep it up. And the germiners comes in and you're done. It's not the way it is with municipality.
Well, I would just point out two buildings, which you've heard me talk about before. The residential mortgage building on C Street, okay, that has excellent landscaping, very, very attractive. And then just go look at the Walmart landscaping. And, you know...
Wood landscaping.
Yeah, wood landscaping. Yeah, wood landscaping, exactly, exactly. Mr. Potter, do you have a comment?
I have a comment.
But you cannot talk, you cannot discuss anything that is before this commission, just as a reminder.
That's fine.
All right, very good.
And, and, oh, I won't even say anything about the Community Council meetings, or.
[laughter]
A total of everybody.
I'm not the only one who's driven.
Might be a semi-expert, but. The issue with the, the landscaping that I'd like to put out there is that, one of the things that I've observed over the years, and I've suggested a few times, and it's never gotten any traction, is that so many times, the plant material is poor, and gets put in the ground anyway, even though they are supposed to get inspected before it goes in the ground, and approved. And the soil isn't prepared adequately. They stick it right on gravel or something else. I suggest you, and I'm waiting for a big hurrah over here, maybe, that, like special inspection for welding or other things, that I believe that the biggest thing going right now with that, if it were installed right, we'd see a lot more success with the landscaping.
That's right.
I don't, I don't think it's that much snow damage, or everything else. I think if it was good plant material, that was approved before it got on site, and that it was planted correctly, and inspected when it was planted to guarantee it was done right, I think we'd have much better success. So, I'm going to suggest that you have a special inspector requirement as part of your subdivision agreement. You've got a subdivision that requires the landscaping to go in per plan, but you don't have anybody doing special inspection to make sure that it's done right. I can't, I can't tell you how many times I've gone out to project sites, and either pushed it, ogged it down, and, and sampled how deep the actual topsoil and planting mix is, under the tree, or what they did, or been able to go right out and pull the tree directly out of the ground, and it's got a root ball about this big, which is not what's supposed to happen. It has no chance to survive. And quite frankly, there are really good landscape companies in town, and then there are landscapers and landscape companies that come back every two years under a different name.
Yes.
With a different crew, that still bid low on the city jobs, and get to work, and they don't have any adequate inspection. So, my suggestion would be to have a special inspection requirement, just like you have for welding and some of the construction requirements. So, you make sure it's done right to start with. Because they'll go back the next year, it's cheaper for the landscaper to go out and replace a tree in a spot that's not done right the next year, and then wave goodbye, claim they went out of business, change their name, come back and bid on jobs as a different company. And that is pervasive in this community.
Well, it, it should cost as much to plant a tree as the tree itself costs. And I would agree with you, because I've seen a lot of it in subdivisions that have not been properly done. I just think about that inspector, and, you know, it, it, there, I would like there to be another way for us to accomplish the landscaping require, the, the.
Have the engineer and architect certify it, rather than creating another inspection process.
Or just give the existing inspector additional training.
That's a good idea. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Zoning inspectors, we did that, Dave Brennan and I self-set up, we held a training session for all the zoning inspectors, went over to the municipal arborists, he sat down, showed us how to do the inspections, and, and we did it one more time, just before we retired. But since then, I don't think they've done it.
Yeah, all right, there, that's, that's the answer. Yes, it's training. There, there's existing staff that can do it, they just need to have the training in order to do it.
What, what I see is, as a general contractor in my business, is that we, 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 we price a project, whether it's private or public, and, and, and prices come in from subcontractors. And, and if it's private, and you, and you go to the owner, and you say, here are the prices, the owner, everybody defaults to the low price. Okay? And then, the general contractor typically has to make good. If the subcontractor doesn't, fails, whether it's electrical, or, or whatever it is, that, you know, the, the general has to make a good. So, in reality, developer, or the municipality, they're looking through the, they use the warranty provision.
Yeah.
And, and, and whatever, to, to make it good. So, that's, you know, there's a two-year warranty, and you're going to die. But at the end of the day, if you look at the inspection, you know, their focus is on, is, is they have, they have, the people from AWW come walk through, they have street and road maintenance walk through to sign off first, before the warranty starts. Well, there's no one that comes through from landscaping, or parks and rec, or anything like that, that comes through for a final sign off. So, I, I, I really, I really think that between additional training, the on-site, the inside inspector, that's licking everything generally, ensuring, and then, you know, digging them if there's not, and then a final inspection from municipalities already internal, like they do with, 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 you know, water and sewer, and roads, and, you know, I think, I think that'll solve the problem. And it'll help contractors like myself, not have to clean up the messes of these people that start today, go broke tomorrow, start another day, go broke again.
Right.
Because the owners are really protected. Unless the contractor goes away.
I'm not going to comment on that last statement.
Well, this family has a bond, performance and payment bond, and they have a warranty, so.
I think that's, I think that's a, that's a good, a good solution. And when, if the landscaping falls under the general contractor, then the general contractor can give very specific instructions in terms of how that landscaping should be installed, and the caliber of the tree, and all that sort of thing, so that, that creates a level playing field, when it, the specificity of it, of the landscaping requirement and install.
Well, that's what you put in Title 21.
Yeah.
So, you have an appendix or something that says, this is the standard for which you have to do it.
Because I would agree, there is no standard, and, yeah, yep.
No, I mean, it.
Okay.
And you can get different quality of the same plants when you go out and look for you to buy it.
Yep.
This contractor's, from my view, is the standard. If that's, if you think it's right. Chairman, I don't know if we're going to continue Task 83, probably not.
No, we're not.
But, there are a number of items that I had identified that are not on this listing here, that I think need to be dealt with, or actually identified by Mr. Coffey as well, too. And I don't think one of, I can give it to Sally, and you can include it on the next listing?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. All right, very good.
While we were talking about landscaping, does anyone have any concern on use of landscape units, or any specific, I know that some issues that were raised, when I talked to individual people, on the use of some of the, the units, and the number of points being awarded for some things, and not for other things? Is there anyone who wants to discuss that while we talk about landscaping, or?
You know, I don't want to discuss it right now, that's a really intense discussion.
Right, right.
But you know, the staff's been working with the local chapter of Society of Architects to come up with.
That'd be nice, if they could have a loader operator, design some of those parking lots.
That's who they got.
What's that? I mean, it really, I'm being serious, if they, they could have a landscape design that was conducive to snow, I drove over to the two malls, to Cotton and.
Square, yeah.
Well, the landscape was nice, I went through there, and I looked at all the random piles of snow that they left, and I wish the loader operator must have been dizzy trying to plow that thing. And, and if there was some innovative designs, that could make the parking lots look good, and be able to be maintained, you know, maybe somebody, that some of the guys.
Straight push it. Period.
Okay, great. All right.
When were you expecting to have that?
Tom?
Just briefly, on Friday, you all should have received Department Issue Response, Department Issue Response for the issues raised by the public on Chapters 1 through 3. And as part of that packet, there were four exhibits. The last exhibit, Exhibit D, contains the written comments that we received from the public. Exhibit C is, per the Commission's request, a, the Municipal Attorney's opinion regarding comprehensive plan mandatory compliance. And so, that's available. And then Exhibits A and B, basically are ancillary to the Department Issue Response, and so it will be continued.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you all very much. For those of you that arrived, Commissioners that arrived a little bit later, let me reintroduce Jim Ferguson, whose name is going to be submitted tomorrow. Please take a moment to welcome him. You know, his appointment is going to be, I'm sure will be confirmed. He is a professional engineer, the former president of Alaska General Contractors. And we will see him on May 8th, will be his first Commission meeting. We thank him for coming as a volunteer to these, to these work sessions. We will be meeting again next week, here in this room, at 5:30. Like Bruce, if you have additional comments and issues, please convey them to Sally with the CC, to the other Commissioners. Our goal is, everybody receives all of the same information at the same time, so that we all can be thinking about what our needs are, and comments should be. Other than that, Tom and I were on the same plane a week ago, Friday. I was headed on vacation, you were headed to the American Planning Association, and you said you were going to get a tour of small lots.
I did.
Yeah, do you have any comment you want to share with the Commission about lots that are less than 6,000 square feet? Are you pro or con?
Is that trip going to get the year?
I have.
Two?
I don't think so.
Put you in the GSA gang in Vegas for a week.
Yeah, 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 really, did you divert to the GSA, or?
No. To Vegas. Secret Service.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I just don't see Tom in.
So, no, you know, it is a topic that I want to include, which are small lots under 6,000 square feet. So, what did you, what did you find out?
Well, LA does have a small lot ordinance, and it, they, they do allow subdivision into very small, single-family lots in their multifamily districts.
In their multifamily.
In LA, you can imagine that the environment is, is much denser, and their multifamily districts tend to have multifamily buildings, they're six, eight units, or units. So, in, in LA, you, you can build a, a, a small lot subdivision, take a 50-foot wide lot, 120, 150 feet long, depending on the district, you can, you can, you can put quite a few houses on it.
How many?
I think you'd be down to, by law, down to 600 feet, square feet per lot. Most are, most that we toured were 1,000 square feet or more.
Per lot?
These were 50-foot wide? That's a normal lot, you said.
Was it one of Baker?
So, you would take a 50-foot wide lot, and subdivide it into smaller lots. And, and like the, I think like Connie's mentioned several times, that the advantage is avoiding common open space, common, commonly owned access ways, basically, so that the access is unen easement, and that the entire lot is subdivided, and.
So, did you get some graphics from those types of projects?
So, who does the snow shovel on the Sunday?
They, they don't have a snow problem.
Yes, LA.
They don't have to deal with that.
Right, right. It would be a homeowners association, yeah.
Connie, you know, the Mayor's Task Force on homelessness is looking at that smaller lot, and sort of thing, so, that would be real interesting to get to Daryl Hess, Tom, over at Health and Human Services, because that's one of the things they're trying to consider as well.
Well, it certainly makes, it certainly makes housing more affordable.
And, and some of the new houses were going for only $800,000. I don't know what they would have costed otherwise.
Was it appealing? Did you like them, or did you not like them?
The ones that we visited were developed by leading architects, and they were, they seemed attractive.
So, they had a front yard and a back yard, and how did they break the 50 foot block?
Generally, well, I suppose pictures could probably.
Yeah, 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 send us pictures, send us pictures. Yeah, send us some graphics, yeah. Do they have garages?
They are a car city, they have garages.
Yeah, they have garages. Are they all front-loaded?
Do they have any alleys?
No alleys.
No alleys, they're all front-loaded.
They don't have alleys.
They do have alleys.
They do have front alleys.
Come up with solutions, that's your job. Thank you.